Yeah. Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we'd like to call the meeting to order. Please, I ask for the flag pledge, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic. One nation, under God.
Liberty and justice for all. Boy, is that a mess when all of us try to say it at one time.
Yeah. Sounds better next month when we'll be in one room, right?
We hope so.
We hope so.
God willing.
Okay. All right. Any discussion about the agenda for the evening?
I have no.
And I would be entertaining a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
That's Arlie? Who seconded it?
Mike Flynn.
Motion, Jordan seconded it.
We have a cat on our move.
Yeah, I see that.
Mr. Chair, Mike Flynn seconded it from what I was hearing.
Okay. I was going by the waving of Jordan there, but.
All right. Maybe they jumped in about the same time.
Yep.
Mike, am I not?
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All in favor to accept the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passed. Um, approval of the minutes. Um, is there any discussion about the minutes? 3/18, 2021 meeting, minutes? Any discussion about them?
Motion to approve.
Okay, who's that?
Second.
Who was, whose was the motion to approve? Was that Louie?
Yep, that was me, myself and I here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And the second was?
Arlie.
Okay. So then a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passed. And I guess they're calling this old business because it was tabled from last month, so.
It went as far as the county board, at which time the petitioner asked to have it removed from the county board agenda, uh, so that they could address, uh, some of the, the questions that had come up, uh, during the planning commission meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, okay. I'd like to call the old business pocket number PC
And, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, it was tabled at the planning commission level. They, the planning commission chose to table it to today's meeting.
That's what the minute said, so that's what I was wondering.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I guess the first thing, is the PowerPoint presentation, or do you want the staff to present it again?
Rec. I'm gonna just stop sharing and I'll share that screen now. And then Lou can take it away and tell me when he wants to advance the slides.
All right. That sounds good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, as was mentioned before, this is a petition that was tabled from last month, uh, due to, um, concerns from neighbors, um, and to give the petitioner a chance to, uh, um, address those concerns. Um, if you look in your packets, um, there, uh, is some materials from the petitioner. They, uh, submitted, um, specifically, um, addressing a number of items that were, uh, brought up, um, in, uh, public comments, um, prior to the meeting last month. Um, I'm not gonna go through every single one, but they're, um, they're in your packet there to, um, to look at and review. Um, there's also a number of public comments, um, from neighbors, um, which I'll touch on a few of the, of those later on in the presentation. Um, but I'll run through these slides since we never got to them last month. Um, this is a, uh, one megawatt, uh, solar array proposed on the George and Kimberly Carr, um, property on County Road One in, um, um, Dresbach Township. Um, next slide, please. It, a little bit of history, um, this was also before the planning commission, uh, back in September of 2020. Um, at that time, the planning commission had recommended denial of the petition, uh, based on, um, move a window here. It was in the way of my, um, of my slide. Sorry about that. Um, it was, the original petition was denied, uh, or recommended denial, um, because of, um, concerns regarding erosion and sediment control, as well as, uh, impacts to neighboring properties. Um, the petitioner then after the, uh, the planning commission meeting and before the county board, um, uh, requested the petition to be withdrawn. And so at that point, um, uh, the, uh, the petition was withdrawn and, um, didn't go any further. So the county board never, um, considered the request. Um, the new application that's before you now is, is virtually the same as that original one. Um, with a few, um, uh, additions, uh, the, the petitioners have proposed a $50,000 performance bond, which was not there before, in order to address concerns with erosion control, um, should the funds be, be needed to, to be accessed. Um, uh, the other pieces are, there's a, a little bit more information on, um, um, uh, vegetative screening. They've added some screening up along the road, um, and near the driveway, um, in addition to the, uh, the screen that's around the array. Um, and then the, um, the comments that, um, that I, uh, indicated before are also in your packet. Those are the only, um, additions or differences from the original, uh, application. Um, at that time, uh, last fall, the, uh, erosion control, um, issues largely focused on the two neighboring projects that are just downhill from this project. There's, um, two projects on the property existing that are co-located. So this would be the third one-megawatt project. Each of these are about eight acres um, in size. And there was concern, there's, there was some, um, um, difficulty, um, stabilizing the first two sites. And, um, and so that was part of the discussion back in, uh, September. Um, so, um, let's move to the next slide. Just to remind you, the, uh, location is on County Road One. You can see, uh, just north of, um, uh, La Crescent on Apple Blossom Drive in Dresbach Township. Next slide. A couple of, uh, little aids to, uh, give you an idea of how the site is proposed to be laid out. Um, the, the map on the left shows the, um, actual solar arrays and their orientation, um, uh, north-south, uh, facing to the, um, um, the east and west. Um, and then the one on the right, uh, shows the two existing, uh, sites and existing, um, pre-existing land use. The, the sites are, uh, um, on agricultural fields, um, they're in a corn and bean rotation. Next slide. Um, uh, like I said, the eight acres of land, um, approximately on this, on this, uh, proposed project, currently row crops on class two and class three soils. So the class two soils would be, uh, would be prime soils. The class three soils would be, uh, soils of statewide importance. Um, the nearest neighbors are approximately 300 feet to the north. Um, and then 700 feet to the east across, um, the ones to the east are across Apple Blossom Drive. Um, and the zoning ordinance has a required setback of 300 feet. So both of those will be meeting the setback. Um, slopes on the site are, um, are, are, are 2% to 12%. It's located on top of the hill, so, um, it's not, uh, the, the slopes drop off on the, on the lower side, um, beyond the, this project. Um, and that was probably part of the problem with those previous two sites was the, the slopes, um, in addition to, um, poor soil and, um, um, uh, big, uh, rain events, um, during construction that led to some, uh, erosion control problems. Uh, next slide. Just gonna touch on Apple Blossom Scenic Drive. Um, it is, um, uh, County Road One is designated a scenic byway by Minnesota DOT. Um, and, um, those, those roads are defined as a road corridor that has regionally outstanding scenic, natural, recreational, cultural, historic, or archaeological significance. Um, I think, uh, um, Apple Blossom Drive is, uh, uh, primarily a scenic byway because of the outstanding scenic, uh, and natural, um, um, uh, significance. So, next slide. Um, the petitioners are required to submit a landscape plan and pollinator plan, as well as a decommissioning plan with financial surety, um, as well as a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, the, uh, petitioners have, um, uh, agreed to put up a $50,000, um, uh, financial surety, which is not required by ordinance. Um, this is in addition to what we, um, usually require as the $30,000 financial surety for the decommissioning. So, one is for decommissioning. That's the normal one that we usually have on these, uh, these types of petitions. The second piece is, uh, um, for the erosion control, and that's in addition to, it's unique to this project to address some of the concerns. Um, the petitioners have, uh, uh, submitted some, uh, uh, some plans for screening, um, um, but they're not firmed up. We usually look at those, um, after the petition is approved, uh, before the development certificate, um, for construction is, is issued. Um, but they will give you an idea of where that screening, um, will be placed or is proposed to be placed at this time. Uh, next slide. Um, like I said before, the, the current land use is in row crops, um, and it's in, uh, class two and three soils on this site. Um, the previous two, uh, um, sites had, had slightly different soils, um, and were on steeper slopes. Um, but this slight site has class two and three, um, and currently in, uh, in row crops. Um, after, if, if this gets approved, obviously the, um, the site will have, um, perennial vegetation as most of our other, um, community solar sites have. Next slide, please. Um, I think we already touched on the slopes, but, um, uh, 2% to 12% on the top, you can see the, um, uh, the topographic lines are fairly, uh, spaced out, indicating that it's, um, fairly flat on top. It's gently sloping, I would say. Um, the previous two sites, sites have, um, um, tighter, uh, topographic lines showing the, the steepness of slopes. Um, uh, these are, uh, uh, 10-foot top contours. So over the, between each of those lines, it, it falls 10 feet. Um, next slide. Uh, the slide just showing, um, the, uh, location of, uh, screening. Um, this was prior to their, uh, the, the petitioners' updates. So, um, the green area is, um, an area proposed for screening. Um, and that hasn't changed. What's changed is that they've also added, um, some areas of screening to the north. Um, you can see along Apple Blossom Drive, there's a gap between the existing vegetation and the property line. Um, the petitioner is proposed to add screening in that location as well as by the access drive. Um, I think this is a good time to discuss a little bit about previous, um, uh, screening attempts, uh, by the previous projects. Um, there is some screening that was there, that was planted, um, that was required previously. Um, those, uh, plantings, much of that was, was, um, mistakenly planted within the road right away and would need to be, um, um, replaced. Um, so that, that's not the responsibility of this project, um, but, um, they are, um, taking heed of, uh, the previous projects and adding some more screening along there. And that screening will be outside of the road right away. Um, and, uh, we'll be working with their landscape architect to try to, um, make sure that that's, uh, test back. Um, next slide. Um, Dresbach Township is in support of the petition. Um, I'm also gonna just touch on some of the other comments that were received at this point. Um, they should all be in your packet or have been, um, emailed to you in the last couple of days. Um, one, um, um, comments of note was from Daryl Buck at the Soil and Water Conservation District, and, um, it was kinda nice to hear from Daryl because he didn't seem to have, um, much for concerns as far as erosion control on the top, uh, on this, on this project. Um, I've been on the site multiple times, um, on the previous two projects with Daryl, um, talking about, uh, all the issues around those projects and, um, and it was nice to hear that Daryl, uh, didn't, uh, didn't have, uh, concerns with this one. If the, um, um, the stormwater pollution prevention plan is, um, is, uh, is submitted, we get a chance to review it and it's, uh, it's installed properly. So, um, that was one of notes. Um, there were a number of comments from neighbors, um, which, um, which is why it was, um, uh, tabled in the first place. Um, we've got, received a couple more in the meantime, uh, that, uh, are mainly, uh, there's a number of concerns. Um, uh, much of it revolves around, um, erosion control, but also, um, I, I'd say more of it is just the, um, the amount of, um, solar panels, the, the, the aesthetics of, of the neighborhood and, um, views from, from their home and from Apple Blossom Drive. Um, they're concerned about their neighborhood changing, um, character. Um, and, um, uh, what that might mean for property values and, um, quality of life and, um, everything else. So, um, I just wanted, didn't wanna gloss over that. Those are, um, uh, that's been, uh, there's a number of people in that neighborhood that, um, um, have, uh, made comments and, um, um, and, and shared, and I'm sure they're at this meeting and maybe would be, uh, commenting during the public hearing, so. Um, there was also a, um, an interesting, uh, comment that I'd like to highlight here today, um, that we received from, um, a, a solar developer, a smaller solar developer in Winona County who works with farmers and, um, individual property owners for personal solar, um, um, uh, development. Um, and he made some interesting comments about, um, the capacity in the county and, um, that some of these larger one-megawatts, uh, um, uh, solar farms are gobbling up the, um, the available capacity and in some cases, um, not leaving any left for, um, for private landowners who might want to, um, or farmers who might want to, um, reduce their energy, um, 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 footprints and, um, and costs by, um, putting, uh, solar arrays on their, um, barn sheds, homes. Um, there's, uh, there was one specific, uh, uh, case where the, um, uh, the Gibbs farm that had actually, um, been approved for and, and built a one, one-megawatt, um, a community solar project, they went to, um, um, get approval for their, um, their personal solar array to offset costs on their dairy farm and were denied, um, access because there's too much, um, um, there's not enough capacity, um, in the area. So, he was concerned about that and was, had made some suggestions for ordinance change, um, to limit the, the size of, um, of, um, um, of, uh, these, um, commercial solar farms in the future. So, um, that was an interesting topic. He did want us to mention that today as part of this, um, uh, public hearing as well. Um, next slide, Pete, please. So in conclusion, um, uh, controlling stormwater and erosion is, is key on this site. Um, the stormwater pollution prevention plan will be key. Um, if approved, this, uh, this, uh, project will be part of approximately 25 acres, um, of solar on this property dedicated to generating solar energy. And, um, uh, so it's kind of the, um, uh, cumulative effect, uh, on this property that's, uh, of concern to many. Um, uh, there's also a couple of, um, uh, solar arrays down the road, um, that is, I think, leading to some of the public out, um, um, public animosity as well. So, the recommendation is to consider, um, as always, all the testimony and materials, um, before making, um, adequate findings and criteria, to the criteria, uh, in support of the, of your decision. Um, if you decide to, uh, recommend approval to the county board, um, we do have 16 conditions for your consideration. Um, and with that, um, I will hand it back to the chair.
Thank you, Lou. Is there any member of the planning commission that have any questions?
Yes.
Who? Okay. Lynn?
Yes. Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for all your work on this, Lou. Um, I actually have a couple of questions. Um, but I'm trying to remember, we, we talked a few months ago about how many, um, solar one-megawatts are allowed in Winona County. And if I remember right, you said we were up to like 23 and we're only gonna allow 25. Is, is my memory serving me well there?
Um, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what, I don't have the number in front of me of what we're actually at, but it's somewhere around 20, 21, 22, somewhere like that, that's, um, that have been approved in, um, um, in Winona County. Um, the capacity and how many can be approved, um, is, is something that we have talked about. I know the planning commission, we've been really interested in trying to find that out. It's really hard to determine. Um, Excel gives, uh, gives maps, um, which we shared with you guys. And, um, based on the maps and, um, what we've heard from developers, um, you know, it, we seem to be getting close to reaching capacity in some, in, on the, on some of the Excel lines. Um, in this area along Apple Blossom Drive, I think I remember them saying that there was maybe, maybe there's room for another two, three, four megawatts. Um, but that's just information that we got from developers because they actually know more than we do when they go to, um, um, apply for access to Excel's lines. Then they do their inter, interconnection agreement, then they hear, they, they, they get information that we're not privy to, um, because we're not making applications.
Okay. Thank you. So, so it sounds like, and maybe this is an assumption I'm making, but it sounds like the more spread out the gardens are throughout the county, the, the easier it is to not reach the capacity versus having them all conglomerated in, in one area.
Right. I mean, each, um, each area or each line has its own capacity.
Okay. Okay. Well, I have another question, um, and it's about the, the SWPP. I don't wanna make any assumptions, um, but when you talk about stormwater protection plan, it, it makes me think that there's gonna be more digging, there's gonna be culverts, there's gonna be like some kind of a, um, you know, waterway for the, the storm runoff. Can you go into a little more detail about what an SWPP actually is?
Sure. Um, I'll give you a little bit of information on like what a, a, a stormwater pollution pre, prevention plan is, but also, um, kinda, um, the construction practices for these, um, solar farms, um, what, what they end up having. A lot of times they'll, they'll make it sound like there isn't gonna be a lot of, um, excavation, but what we've found is that there's usually, um, uh, quite a bit of grading, um, to put them in. I mean, at this point, it's, um, it's, uh, it's a corn and bean field, so it's already tilled. Um, there's not perennial vegetation on it, um, but they will be, um, grading, um, the, the top and it'll be, um, um, it won't have perennial vegetation on until after construction. So there's a construction period where there's not, uh, any cover on it, um, through the summer. Uh, and if you get big rains like we have been getting and are getting more often, that can be, um, that can cause problems. Um, so, a stormwater pre, pollution prevention plan is required for, um, projects that are going to, um, that are over an acre in size. Um, the, uh, the state requires it, um, uh, and, um, and, um, then we, we just make sure that it's being done, um, on, on, from our level from, um, uh, during the, the permitting process. Um, and we also expect to make sure those practices are in place. But, um, there's usually two sections of it. There's, uh, um, there's construction practices. So during construction, um, the stormwater pollution, for pollution prevention plan will lay out what practices are done during construction and then lay out permanent practices for after, for how they're gonna control, um, um, erosion into the future.
Okay. So another, I'm sorry. Uh, another thing that makes me wonder, you know, I lived down south as a kid and the, 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 the SWPP plans were concrete. You know, I mean, that's how the water didn't get anywhere else. It was like this big giant concrete levee. So there's probably gonna be some concrete poured for the SWPP as well?
Nope. This'll all be, um, um, vegetative, um, um, seeding, um, to control erosion. It'll be erosion control mats, erosion control logs. Um, there might be, um, some berms, um, a lot of times it's common, or, um, um, a catch basin that would catch some of the, um, 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 stormwater and, uh, allow it to infiltrate before it leaves the site. Those are common, uh, practices that are included. No concrete at all, um, no hardscapes, um, uh, proposed, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other planning commission members have any questions for Lou or anybody else on staff?
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, so Lou, is it, uh, was it the same organization that did the other two on this?
It's the, it's the same company developing, developing the site and going through permitting. Um, I would assume that there would be a different company that they would then contract out or sell to that would, um, then, like, install and, um, then, then manage the site afterwards.
Okay.
Sometimes these have been changing hands once, twice. You know?
That's interesting. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, how many solar systems in the county do we have that are 25 acres or three-megawatts?
The biggest site that we have in the county, the biggest project is five, is, is, is five megawatts. And, um, that's about, I believe that's, it's been a while, but I believe it's about 25 acres. Eric, Eric or Kay, are you online? And do, can you, um, corroborate that?
That was the MyEnergy one, I think, cooperative.
It's, yes, the one in Rolling Stone Township.
That's the one in Rolling Stone Township, not the one, not the one by Stockton.
Yeah, Me Energy is the one by Stockton that hasn't been built yet.
Right.
Hey, and so are, um, are there any others that are that size that we've got in the county?
Um, that are the size of the one proposed here, or?
Right.
Um, yeah, most of the ones that-
Yeah, most of the ones that we've that we have in the county are one megawatt projects, about the same size as the one that's proposed here.
Okay. And on the Rolling Stone site, does that project affect the neighbors' views?
No, that site's up on top of the bluff and you can't see it from the road or any neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one of the comments of the neighbors on this project was about the unsightliness of the telephone poles. Do most of these projects or systems use above-ground cabling or do they bury it?
Most of them have been above-ground with similar pole setup. Yeah, they usually have like six to eight, I don't know, the developer could probably give better information, but there's usually like six to eight poles per per one megawatt project that would connect it to the the Excel line.
Okay.
There, that's, the the one that didn't was the Me Energy one. And that's because the Me Energy line going up Stockton Valley is buried already. So in that case, you know, their lines, they don't have those those poles. So they're they're not proposing to have those poles, it'll all be buried.
Okay. Um, and you know, one of the things that, and this is just kind of general, maybe not specific to this project, but could we kind of include as a standard condition that not only should developers, you know, create a landscape plan and have it approved by the county, but that they must maintain the landscaping? Is that possible?
Um, I would think that we could add something probably to that, that condition for for landscaping that addresses maintenance. We we could look at that when you get to that point, if you're looking at conditions, we can, you know, have a look at that condition and see if there's a way to add something about maintenance. Usually they are hiring a company that is in charge of of long-term maintenance of the screening as well as the the pollinator plantings. Because the pollinator plantings take take months and years to to establish. And they become less maintenance, they need less maintenance as time goes on. But the first few years especially, there is a bit of maintenance required.
And one of the great things, just to insert something for staff, is that just very recently, we've been getting pollinator plans and landscape plans that are actually done by the professionals in the field and not something that's just thrown on as an afterthought, like some of the early earlier projects. And even though we don't have the staff to be driving around the county on a regular basis, staff has been making more of a point of inspecting solar facilities and letting letting them know when, you know, the plants are dead or something's broken off or, you know, like the landscaping has started to look weedy and things. So staff can aid with that, but having a regular landscaping maintenance firm that is is going to take care of the pollinators and make sure that animal predation, you know, deer browsing, rabbits, you know, that things are fenced or whatever they have to do to take care of it is only in their best interest because then they don't have to replace it and the thing's actually correct.
Um, just one last question, the financial surety of 50K for erosion control. That was in the form of a bond, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so. That's what they had proposed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Does anyone else have any questions for Lou? If not, I have one. And this goes to Kay and Lou and probably Daryl Buck as well. Are you guys learning now that you have some out there on hillsides how to better predict the erosion that's going to take place? Because it's obviously not like an open field. It's obviously more like a building with a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of square of glass there that you're kind of channeling the water together. So I'm I'm hoping you guys are learning a little more as we go along how to to better control the erosion on these.
Well, Mr. Chair, I might point out that the stormwater pollution prevention plans that we lovingly call SWPs are generally prepared by engineers. And so it's up to licensed engineers to prepare these plans and make sure that they're workable for the sites. And then they have to also be installed and maintained properly. And when you get some of the slopes that were encountered on the lower-level projects, you know, when a silt fence is not sufficient, that's not something that should be in the SWP. Then you're talking about a very large core coconut log with 10-foot stakes pounding it into the slopes at at intervals. But while you're doing some of the work, you you also don't want to have a three-inch rain that rains out all your work. So there there can be a combination of bad luck. In terms of the staff's responsibility to see that this is actually working, we're, we've all been up and down that drive, looking at things that weren't working and, you know, talking to those representatives from the companies that we could locate. One of the things that we've asked to be included in the conditions in the past few months is that the developers are required to let us know when they sell and that they continue to refer to the name of the project by the name that is ending up being approved on those projects that are approved. And that they let us know the names because if landscaping dies or or it the SWP fails in one aspect of the SWP designed by the engineers, who are we calling? Because at times the the projects have been sold a couple of times and we're like, okay, who's the responsible party? We can always find the property owner, but they don't always know either. So what we are learning in that respect, yes. And of course, between the the Soil and Water Conservation District staff and our staff, we have two certified SWP design planners on staff. And of course, we're closely with the SWCD. So we're trying to damp this down as best we could. Sorry to take so long to explain, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I'd just like to piggyback on that and add that I think one lesson from our perspective as well, maybe one for the planning commission, is that we should all be thinking long and hard about approving projects on slopes of over 12%. You know, it's just going to get, it's going to, it's going to be a challenge to to keep those those sites in place when they get, when they get to be that steep, so.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Louis, do you have something? I see your light is on there.
Yes, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the technicality. Does anybody know what generation of solar panels they're using? If they're using the new second-generation ones where they have a double-entry system on it and their lifetime on these particular panels? And when they possibly figure in that they may replace some of them other than a hailstorm or something like that?
I think there is some information like that in the submittal, but I think that is a good question for the project developer.
Yeah, the next speaker should hopefully can handle some of that. Any other questions? So go to the next. Okay, keep talking, Louis, keep going.
Well, the part of it was, is I've been reading back that they're having a second generation on these solar cells that they maintain their power more over the peak than what they have on some of these early solar cell systems that they put out. It's just curious to find out, I mean, they, what the lifetime of these panels they figure there are too. And because if you're going to have a project like that, they may have to end up replacing them, what, five, 10, 15 years or something would be the replacement on them?
I can kind of answer that. Actually, I sell solar in my spare time. Normally, the the panels are warranted for 25 years. So that's considered like the average lifetime of a solar panel. And then any, if they had to be replaced in that time, it would be under warranty. So it's it's fairly rare that they fail within that period.
Okay. Fine.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, Mark.
Okay, Steve?
Just a quick question. So what I understood Lou to suggest is that in the future, we need to think about, I think, not putting the solar arrays on steep slopes, which is really even much more in conflict with preserving good prime agricultural land. Because what we're saying is we really need that flat spot up on top of the hill like this one is so that we don't have the erosion problem. And then we leave the farmer with the already poor soils over the edge of the hill to try to stabilize erosion year after year. So I understand it's hard any way you do it, but it depends on which which side you're looking at it from. It's a comment, I guess.
Thank you.
And I mean, yeah, I get it, it's, I I think these sites, once they get stabilized and once they get their vegetation on them, I mean, we'll see how how they age, what problems we have down the line. But I mean, hopefully that they would, they would, you know, stabilize and reduce some of the erosion that might have been there before for the farmer. That's a plus, but it's during construction before those those practices and the vegetation is established that we saw a lot of problems with the the two on on this property, so.
But it, but it makes sense to require the establishment of an, of a, you know, perennial crop, a clover, alfalfa, whatever, pollinator-friendly mix that that needs, that needs to be established. And then can they drive that and and drive these stakes in? Or does it have to be this graded bare soil, open earth construction for these things to go in?
Yeah, it would, it would be nice if they could get a good, good cover down and then do something that was a little bit less invasive, you know, do some drilling through that. Would probably work much better, but that's not what we've seen as far as practices on the sites thus far. So maybe, maybe the the petitioner could talk to that point a little bit once the public hearings opened.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have another question for Lou.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe I'm I'm being a little ignorant or naive, but I have an environmental science degree. And I just read last week that we are no longer strip mining on mountain tops because it's disastrous. Doesn't matter when it becomes disastrous, but it's disastrous. So I'm kind of wondering why we're treating our bluff tops differently? Why, why we think we can strip this, the topsoil and and still restore the horizons of the earth by just putting it back on top later? I'm just really confused. It it seems like, you know, we've got many mountains. So I'm wondering why, you know, the whole world's figured out strip mining on mountain tops is a failure and 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 we're starting to strip mine our tops of our bluffs.
I guess I wouldn't characterize this as strip mining. So, you know, number one, I don't think they're comparable, Lynn, but just my two cents.
All right, does anyone else have anything? If not, I would like to ask the petitioner, representative of the petitioner would like to speak on behalf of the petition?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, member of the commission, Jeff Feisner here. I worked on the application in front of you. Thank you, Lou, for the presentation and all the information. I think I'll start with a couple of answering some of the questions that the commissioners have. That would be a good way to go. Lynn had made it mentioned, is it better to have these all together or put them spread apart and how that relates to capacity? The capacity is really two different items. It's the substation itself, how many megawatts are available at that substation. Secondarily, it's a matter of how much capacity is on the existing lines, the power lines. And so if the substation has 10 megawatts available and this particular power line going down this particular road has five megawatts available, it really doesn't matter if all five of those megawatt projects are built right next to each other or one every, so that spreading them out doesn't affect capacity. Good line, and the substation is what really affects the capacity. And then, let's see, Kelly had asked about number of poles. I know the number of poles was brought up. There are three poles that are put in per megawatt. Now, the first one is Excel-owned pole. And then the second two are owned by, they're part of the garden and owned by the garden developer. And then Kelly also mentioned maintaining landscaping as a condition. That is typical of what we have done in other places. And I don't know if you can do quickhand Lou or not, but I've got some language for you. You could add to the condition that the permittee shall be responsible for maintaining any and all vegetative ground cover and landscaping for the duration of the CUP. And that would allow that to be part of the approval and require us to maintain and anybody else in the future to maintain so that if that landscaping wasn't maintained, then we'd be in violation of the CUP and that it could thus be revoked. So that is something that we do and would be agreeable to. I think Mark had mentioned about controlling erosion. I know it was a giant issue on this particular site a year ago, and that's why we withdrew our application. Because the existing, the two gardens that are there now is steep slope. And they kind of had, when they were during construction, they had the worst of all worlds. They had that super rainy spring or fall and it just, it was, didn't work out very well. So they were actually in non-compliance of their SWP at the time that this one was brought forward. And so knowing they were not in compliance and the concerns that they had, that the board had for erosion, we drew or you withdrew the application and waited for the two existing gardens to get into compliance. And they are in compliance now. We've also gone a step further and offered the $50,000 bond to make sure that whatever the SWP needs and requires, that this project when built will comply to that. And it has some teeth in it, per se. Louis asked about the kind of panels and when they need to replace. I think Jordan can answer that for him. Yes, we don't exactly know. The specific panel right now will be the newest coming out. They keep changing and we keep getting a little bit better panels, but they're all warranted for 25 years. They tend to last probably 35 to 40 years. I know it's predicted at the end of 25 years, they'll be working at about 80% of the capacity of when they're brand new, they hold up quite a long time. So we don't expect to have to replace any panels unless there was hail or damage or something like that. I think I touched on most of them. And as far as the application with, I think there there was kind of two issues that were brought up mainly by the neighbors and staff and so forth. And one was erosion, and I think I've addressed that quite a bit. And the other is the visual aspects of this site and the landscaping that is existing there and what we're proposing. Everybody knows that we can't hide these. We can do our best to try to screen them and dampen the effect. Not sure on the first two, but from the pictures I've seen, it looked like they planted about one-foot spruce trees. And in our landscape plan that we are proposing and working with Kay, it's not approved yet from the county, but we're proposing is two rows of trees around the garden as was shown before. But what I'd like to point out is that the trees that we are proposing to plant will be six to eight feet in height when we plant them. So that will give immediate coverage to the site. And we're also planning on doing the same out of the road right away, but along the road in, I think there's three areas. the road in, I think there's three areas where there isn't some existing vegetation there. So we think that will really help conceal this as best possible. We know it's not possible to completely hide them. It's kind of, I remember 20 years ago when I was developing cell phone towers, you can't hide them. People hated them back then. And now everybody sees them everywhere, and you don't even really see them when you're driving by. I think in 10 years, solar will probably wind up being that same way. That's my opinion. And lastly, just to mention, yeah, the application in front of you meets all the requirements of your code. We have read all the conditions and are agreeable to those. And I'm here to answer any other questions anybody might have. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for applicant, please? Lynn?
I actually took a drive last weekend up Apple Blossom Drive. And the existing solar panels are actually quite lovely. They have like an undulating wave. And I actually pulled over by the properties on the road, knowing, you know, that neighbors had complained about it being unsightly. And it really confused me because the palatial estates are so set back from the road, I would guess that they'd almost have to cross the road and go towards the easement access to see the entire field. I didn't get any impression whatsoever that it's an eyesore, the current arrays. And then I walked to the substation, or wherever it makes the noise, that little cul-de-sac, and looked towards the field where it's proposed. And I thought, okay, yeah, there's going to be some neighbors who, you know, they look out any window on one side of their house, and that's what they're going to see. And I've been, I've been working on some solar projects myself. And I started to wonder, you know, with the exception of being a co-op, where many people come together and everyone feels the benefit of the project, what would motivate a private landowner to want to continue to expand their solar energy gardens if they already have two? I just, I don't understand what the overall good is for the community of what you're proposing. Maybe you could address that for me?
Certainly. Hold on a second, I was printing something for you. Let's see. Can I unmute? Well, it's twofold, I guess. And I don't know how much I would kind of vouch, but a private landowner can, you know, they own the land, they own the property rights to it. They can use it as they see fit, depending on, as long as they're in compliance with the codes of the county. You know, if Mr. Carr didn't want to lease any more land, he wouldn't have to. If he wanted to raise pigs on part of where the solar would be, I'm sure he could probably do that. If he wanted to build a barn, he could probably do that. So there's things you can and can't do. I know his, let me grab what I cut off, and I'll read what I can read without going too into what he does with the funds. Let's see here. I know, here we go, I found it. Pardon me. So George Carr is the owner, and he's looking to, you know, expand. And what he has let me know, and I can't verify it, but this is from an email from Mr. Carr, that he uses over half of the income that he gets off of the solar to support the food pantry and the neighbors in action in the Crescent. And so that's kind of what his way of giving back to the community for having these. Not any, most landlords, any landlord really doesn't have to do that. It's their private land. They can do what they see fit with it. But that's, you asked for his motivation, and that's his.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? If none? Have an open hearing? Open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Steve Jacob?
Steve Jacob made the motion. Do I have a second?
Lynn will second.
We'll go with Lynn Carlson, second?
Second motion, whoever.
Been a motion, a second, to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Passed? So we will open the public hearing. For docket number 021821-01.
Doing great, Mark.
Yeah. So if anyone would like to speak up for or against the petition, now is your time. Please speak up. We'll try to catch you as we can. Okay, I see someone on the phone there would like to say something?
I would like to say something.
Okay. Live, your name, please, and your address?
My name is Rebecca Foss. I live directly across from the current solar panel field. And so we are directly affected by this. And we're very unhappy about it. We've expressed that a couple of times in writing. My main question right now is, why would you solicit our comments if all that is required of the cards is to meet erosion and other county requirements, but not to consider the opinion and perspective of the neighbors?
Okay. Who wants to handle that one?
Actually, we do.
Okay, Lynn?
We do. We do consider public opinion and neighbors.
In what way? In what way has any of this been changed? The plantings that have been made are irrelevant. We can't see them in any way. They're not blocking our view, and will never block our view. We look right out our front door, and what we see is this whole field of solar panels. And the most irritating of all of it are those telephone poles. There are six or seven of them, right almost at the end of our driveway. If this is going forward for approval, which is what it sounds like, I would appreciate that the commissioners consider that we've asked for these poles to be, the wires to be underground. I know that you're saying that others haven't done it. But why do we have to look at these poles? And I'm assuming with the addition of this additional solar field, that you're going to have another six or eight poles that we need to look at. So we're considering 12, 14 poles now, right in this small area? This is awful.
Okay, Lou, do you have an answer for some of that?
Just a reminder that our public hearing is to get information from the speakers, not to engage in discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be a time for discussion after we hear from everybody who wants to speak. And then if there's questions, you guys can answer follow-up questions of the attendees and of staff.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this petition? Please, try to keep it under two minutes.
I would like to speak.
Okay. Kelly, is that your name?
Yes, Kelly Shapiro.
Name and address, please.
Kelly Shapiro. I live directly across as well, right next door to Rebecca, who's just speaking. Our address is 32754, County Road 1. Like I said, we are directly across from this site. And I've written comments, which have been submitted, that you all, I'm sure, have probably read. I would like to address Lynn's comment. I agree with you. I think the existing solar panels are not unsightly. I think if you would go down Burns Valley Road and look at those, those are horribly unsightly. And they're probably more similar to what we're going to see. They are much closer to the road than the existing panels. The proposed panels are at a much higher elevation, and they will pretty much be visible 360 degrees, which the current ones, the majority of the field is not visible from the road. So I think the accumulation of the existing ones, plus an additional eight acres, will make it quite unsightly. And, you know, I think, I have to take issue that about these palatial estates being across the street. We have a nice three-bedroom home. It certainly wouldn't characterize it as a palatial estate. We have a very nice piece of land, which we paid top dollar for. And, you know, it's disappointing that there's not any real consideration of the fact that everyone who lives there has paid a lot of money to live in a beautiful place and have one of our neighbors choose to put something which will be quite unsightly, and to think that that's not going to affect their property values, I think is quite nice. And I would ask you to read my written comments. And I really appreciate the opportunity to address you guys and express our opposition.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this petition? Please speak up now. I don't see anyone. I'll do it one more time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this petition? Time to speak up is right now.
I'll move to close the public hearing. Steve Jacob?
Hey, there's a motion by Steve Jacob to close the public hearing.
Second, Patrick.
And Patrick seconds it? Patrick Byron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Passed? Okay. Now, I'd like some discussion. Has anyone got any questions or would like to talk about this at all?
Mr. Chair, Mark?
Yep.
I was curious, you know, the people were worried about their property values and that. And it's just kind of for everybody's information. I asked a couple of realty, realtor people that I'm familiar with, and asked them what their thoughts are on it. And both of them pretty much said the same thing, that, you know, you or me might go up there and not be a problem. Somebody else might come up there and go, eh, nice place, but don't really appreciate the solar panels across the road. Never mind, you know. I can understand the people's feelings. Another thing I'd just like to throw out there with Gibbs's comment, I also inquired about putting some solar panels on our property, and putting them maybe just a little bit bigger to help pay for them. And I, too, was deterred from going any farther because there isn't any room on our line. And, and Mark, you're very familiar with the area. We've got our low-down solar panels on our, on our little corner of the woods up here. But I do like the idea, you know, that the screening that they're suggesting that they're going to put up of six to eight-foot trees, because most of the other ones we've seen so far are, none of us here tonight will see them cover the solar panel farms, because they won't be big enough. So it's just my thoughts on the whole situation. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or discussion?
Yeah, I was just curious if we have any information on what the tax values in the area of those adjacent properties have done since that, since that initial two megawatts was put in?
Jordan, I don't think, you know, I'm not made with taxes, but the people that I've talked to, the realty people, they said it really hasn't probably affected any different there than anybody else's, you know, because of that. But, you know, there again, you might like it, somebody else might not, you know. So the people down the road who want to sell their property, you know, they're going to have less people to choose from to purchase their homes, their hobby farms, whatever's up there. And so I don't think, on the tax basis, I don't think you're going to see any changes on there.
Is there anyone else with any discussion before we get into the findings of fact?
Mr. Chairman, this is Patrick. Just a couple of comments from me. I was reading the letter from another solar developer. And with creation of bigger arrays, you know, we're limiting the potential or the possibility of the ag community that would like to, you know, put in smaller units to up with their bottom line. I think that's one consideration and bit of information that was good to read. This is the Apple Blossom Highway. And I know the people that I talked to over the decades have enjoyed that drive. And it's an economic engine, I think, for La Crescent and the surrounding area. And I think we also need to take into effect the issues that the property owners have as well. So it's a combination of things there. And also, but Lynn said, we're also taking, I'm not sure how much of the type two cells, or three, two or three, you know, for this site. But again, it's a discussion that we've had many times about taking valuable ag land out of production. So those are just some considerations I think we need to take a look at. Thank you.
Hey.
Yeah, this is, Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Stanich.
Yes, Kelly.
Um, I guess I do have a concern. And it's not just that it's a scenic byway, or that the properties are expensive in that area. But I do think that we should take into consideration how people value where they live, and what they see when they look out their window. And, you know, this is, we only have one other solar project in the county that is this big. And nobody can see that.
Right.
So I think, you know, we might want to consider that, you know, this just isn't the right, for a number of other reasons as well, that maybe this isn't the right place for another solar system. So I guess I would like to make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact, that the staff has um, that the staff has prepared. And we recommend this project for denial to the county board.
I second that motion. Lynn Carlson.
Hey, there's been a motion by Kelly and a second by Lynn to accept the findings of fact as presented and move for a denial. But don't we need to change some of the, to go through the findings of fact and, and, um, say why we will be?
Well, um, Chair, I did ex, I did adopt the findings of fact. And if we take a look at, um, the findings of fact as the staff has prepared, um, uh, the project is directly adjacent to two other projects. This is on, um, oh, this is number one for the, um, solar specific. That's basically a performance issue, um, the soil erosion that we've seen in the past projects. Um, and then, uh, number three, uh, the staff analysis was the, um, SES will have an adverse appearance and will be the third project on the property. Um, and then also, no screening plan will completely eliminate views of the array along the scenic byway. So those, those findings are already in there and that is the basis on which I am recommending the denial.
Okay. Hey, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd.
Steve? Go ahead, Steve.
I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that when a person buys property, as the applicant has here, they have property rights. And if they're willing to uh, do every condition that is put forward, our, how, how do we tell them they can on these two others and we tell the rest of the county people who've applied that they can, but we're going to single you in this application out, we're going to treat you differently? Um, I understand the neighbor's concerns, but as a property rights advocate, my solution is that those neighbors could certainly buy to buy that land and keep it out of solar production, keep it out of farm production, do whatever they want to with it. Uh, but for them to have control over somebody else's property is just a tough pill for me to swallow. And so therefore, I can't support the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I, I would like to respond just in one respect there. Um, they were able to do, um, the first two projects. And we just heard testimony from one of the neighbors that, um, you know, they can't really see the first two projects. But the view of the third project, you just couldn't block it. So it would, you know, um, impinge on their property rights to fully enjoy their property in one sense. And when you compare it to the other, um, solar project that is, that, that is already in operation in Rolling Stone, nobody can see that. So, you know, it's, these things just simply have to be cited correctly. And this is not an ideal site for this, um, or an acceptable site in my mind for this project.
Any other discussion?
Um, Mark, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Arlie.
Um, I guess I, I talked with a solar guy here. Well, I don't remember which one it was up by where we live, um, a year or two ago. And I asked him why they needed to go so close to the road. Why couldn't they go out farther like the Rolling Stone project where you can't see it and all that? And his response was the profit, the property, the profit margin, excuse me, the profit margin wouldn't be as great. So that's why they put it next to the roads and everything else. And, you know, and, and I'm all out for solar. I mean, I, and, and farmers have all the right they want to do with their land. But like Kayla said, why, why can't they be put somewhere? You know, the one in Rolling Stone, they spent a million and a half on the road just to get to it. And they're still turning a profit. You know, uh, why, why can't they find a spot to make everybody happy and, and still have solar power? And not have to have it so close to the road as well as the Apple Blossom Road and the neighbors and, and that. Is there another spot? Uh, I, I'm not familiar with the whole farm acres up in that area, but, um, I guess I'd, I'd like to see it, but I'd like to see it as well, not next to the road.
Mr. Chair?
Lynn?
Um, just to kind of follow up Steve's idea of property rights. In the cities, churches were starting to put solar panels on their properties to help offset expenses. And, and they're being stolen. They're being stolen overnight. So I think having a solar garden that is somewhat obscured from common traffic and views of neighbors could also boohoo the property owner who wants to do whatever he wants to do with his property. Having it so close to the road, who knows what kind of vandalism he may experience?
Uh, they're all fenced in. They're all, they're all in fences. So I don't think it's much of an issue out there.
Well, they'd have to work pretty hard to get them.
Yeah, but, um, up our way, everything is along the road. They're all along the road. And yes, they look pretty, not that great, that's for sure. Um, anyone else have any discussion?
Yep, Mr. Chair, this is Mike Flynn.
Hey, Mike?
Uh, last time we, uh, had this before our planning board and we voted against recommending it. My two biggest objections were, uh, one, the erosion and the problem they had at the construction site. The second was the finding of fact number three, um, where it will have an adverse effect. And what I was looking for was some type of way to better mitigate that problem. To find, uh, an exact spot where only birds will see it flying over is pretty limited. So I know for, for a fact that we have recommended solar farms in many locations that they've tried to mitigate the, uh, landscape and visual part. And, uh, what I was looking for was what would they do to enhance their last application? And we've heard testimony or, or statements that they're going to plant larger trees and so forth and hopefully, you know, mitigate it better than what our first application was. As far as a perfect location for everything, not going to find it. I do, and I have read the input of all the neighbors and I, I appreciate their input and understand their input. Uh, but we still have to stick with the application we have in front of us. And why did we deny it last time? And have they done adequate enough job to address those issues so they can move forward? That will be up to our committee. So that's my statement. I thought we drifted a little bit here on speculation of vandalism and different things. And, and, and let's stick to our application and the security fence and what we have in front of us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else have any discussion? Okay, if not, we have a motion in a second. Stephanie, can you repeat the motion and please?
And it is a motion to adopt the findings of fact as presented and recommend denial of the conditional use permit.
Okay, and for this, we need a roll call vote, correct?
It's probably easier given the number of people on the planning commission.
And who's going to do that?
I believe it's usually the chair.
Okay, we'll start. Arlie Harper.
Nay.
Patrick Byron.
Let, uh, so a affirmative vote would be to deny it.
Yes.
Affirmative for me.
Okay. Lynn Carlson.
Yay.
Hey, Louis Ryman.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Steve Jacob.
Nay.
Jordan Potter.
Nay.
Kelly Stanage.
Yes.
And hold it. I might, Mike, Mike Flynn, where'd you go to?
Nay.
Nay. Hey, what do we have so far?
Five nays and three yeses.
Okay. Well, I'll vote nay and then it'll be five to four.
That would be six to three.
Six to three. There you go. All right, motion failed. Um, should we go through the findings of fact? One by one or what, how do we proceed now?
That's up to you. We can, you can walk through them. You can, there can be another motion, however you choose to continue your discussion.
I'd just like to throw out there that, um, that this isn't a variance, so, um, you don't, not every criteria has to be met.
Right.
So just to keep that in mind, you don't have to go through every criteria and find positive, um, findings for each one. But you do want to put together, um, um, a statement with your, um, um, with your motion as to why.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to focus our attention, this is Mike Flynn. Our attention on the finding of fact number three. I do not have a problem with the finding of facts on the other ones. But I think it, based on our last discussion, I think requires at least discussion on, uh, fact number three. And my question is, is have they done enough to mitigate the, the visual impact for this proposed project?
And who do we ask that question to? Do we ask it of?
Um, ourselves.
I believe that's a question for the planning commission to answer.
Okay.
Well, Mark, Mark, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, the way I'm understanding, they're going to be putting in like seven to eight-foot trees. But they're not going to still hide the top side of the hill because it's, as it goes up, it gets higher. So it may cover the partial, parts of it. So is there anything else that can be done to, to cover so you don't see it? You know, is there any, I, I don't think there's any way of putting in any bigger trees without damaging the tree. So I don't see where there's any, I, I, I don't see where there's any way to cover the rest of it, you know, to, to make the appearance any better than what they're prop, they're proposing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kelly?
Um, both staff and the developer have stated that is, it is not possible to eliminate the views. So I don't, I don't think they can do anything. And I think both the developer and our staff has said that.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any comments or questions or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Eve?
I'm thinking of the, uh, on 248 across from the Spelts, is that Dingfelter?
Yep.
Uh, you know, those trees are, that's, that's one of our longest in the past approved solar arrays. And, I mean, you can hardly tell that trees don't make much of a difference. You drive by, you see the solar panels, you learn to accept it. Uh, it is what it is. Um, I feel like what they're offering here with two rows of large transplanted trees is the best, best they can do and the best we can ask for. Um, is there going to be some visual impact? Uh, I think so, but I think there is on the majority of the other, uh, you know, the uh, Mych brothers up there, you know, the majority of these solar arrays can largely be seen. Can't say I'm a big fan of it, but it is what it is and, um, that's what these people want to do with their property and, uh, help them drive our economy and turn the power to our grid. It's not a perfect world. Nice if you have everything, well, and side effects, but, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval of the application and adopt the fact and conditions as is, as presented.
Um, Mr. Chair, this is Mike Flynn again.
Yep, Mike.
The, I'd like to add a condition, I'd like to add the condition number seventeen, which is already discussed.
Mr. Chair?
Maintenance of the landscape.
Mr. Chair, before you continue any discussion, you do need to, uh, deal with whether or not there's a second to the motion on the floor. Then you can have further discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Mike Flynn seconds it. Now open up for discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to finish my thought about adding another, uh, condition. And that was already talked about. And the condition would be that the landscape uh, and the vegetation be maintained. And that was, uh, brought up from the, one of the contractors earlier in our discussion. I believe we have sixteen conditions and he was favorable to do that.
Uh, Mr. Flynn, this is.
And then if they haven't, yeah, sure.
Um, do you want me to read back what the, uh, developer proposed? Would that be at all useful for?
Yes, I do. Because he was in agreement to that, so I would assume that it's favorable to add that condition. So could you read that back? Because I didn't write it down.
All right, I'm not endorsing anything one way or the other. I wrote, uh, that.
Yes, I understand.
And he suggested that the primatee shall be responsible for maintaining all ground vegetation and landscaping for the duration of the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Can you repeat that so I can put it on the screen?
Sure. Um, the, the language that was used was pretty similar to the primatee shall be responsible for maintaining all ground vegetation and landscaping for the duration of the conditional use permit.
Not the property owner, but the primatee?
We, yeah.
Primatee.
Yeah, we can't bind anyone but, but the property owner.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And the property owner is the one getting the permission.
Yes. Okay.
So how can, how can that be enforced? Because I've seen a couple of solar farms that, including the one on 248 there, looked pretty raggy. Um, and, and I've just, are they just doing it at their leisure when they think they should be done or? Is there something?
It might suggest a, a modification to this language.
Yeah, I think that needs to be done.
Uh, property owners, property owner shall maintain all ground vegetation and landscaping for the, um, consistent with the landscaping plan. Which then binds them to maintaining it as the plan allows for throughout the conditional use permit. And then it would be enforceable.
That would help because, I think the one on 248 last year, they, they trimmed it once. And, you know, the stuff was probably three feet high when they mowed it with a brush hog, if I remember right. And that, I, that's kind of been a nice source since day one down there, but, um, there but um it looks it looked terrible I mean uh the trees aren't like Steve said the trees aren't doing anything anyway but you know there should be something where they keep it keep it trimmed up you know along I mean we all need to live in a and make it look as nice as possible and I think we have a duty to as a commissioners to help provide that with the people that do live across the road um so it doesn't look like an eyesore you know this one may not till next year because it's gonna be just dirt all summer long but I I guess I'd like to see something in there where they're trimmed a number of times during the course of the year uh and I don't know how how that could be set up or if any of the rest of the commissioners really care about it but that's just my feeling.
Kay you have a comment for that?
Uh Mr. Chair it the maintenance of the site depends entirely on the type of plant material if there's uh no more turf or low uh you know there's some on areas that need to be mowed at the time when turf needs to be mowed can depend on how much rain we're getting you know when it goes dormant um there is there's a specific protocol of the care of pollinator plantings that includes getting rid of invasive species cutting down um what grows up tall uh on the first season and so on and so as part of the maintenance plan approval process if permit were to move to the county board for and and be approved there um we would then put together or or rather see the permittee put together a maintenance plan for care because uh evergreens if they're trimmed at the wrong time um it can be a disaster uh certain other plants the flowers are cut off if you trim them at the wrong time so if it would be all right um you know the the process of reviewing the landscape plan will try to take maintenance into account and then we'll try to do the best job possible to ensure that it happens thank you.
Okay I've got a question for Stephanie because we have a motion and a second discussion but yet we added number seventeen without a motion.
Seventeen was added as a suggestion uh we would need a either um have it as a friendly amendment to the original motion or a motion to amend to include that in order to keep it there.
I'd like to make that motion and and if Steve is favorable to that this is Mike Flynn.
Hey Steve are you friendly with the friendly amendment?
Hey yeah I think Mike's made a motion I'd prefer someone else seconds it and then we'll vote on it and I'll sure accept it.
Well. Okay.
It's to your original motion Steve.
There's a motion and a second to amend the original motion to include uh condition seventeen so now you can vote on the motion to amend or you can have further discussion on the motion to amend and then we'll we'll go back to discussing the original motion whether amended or not.
Okay is there any other discussion to this amendment to the yeah? Any other discussion to number seventeen everyone happy with it? Okay we have a motion and a second to put that's the first one we do is number seventeen?
Yep.
Okay.
You worked backwards.
Motion to second to add number seventeen on the list of the what are we on? On the conditions condition number seventeen uh and I suppose we have to do a roll call again?
That's the safest way to do it.
Okay I'm just going by how they're on my computer here Mike Flynn.
Aye.
Aye. Uh Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Jordan Potter.
Aye.
Steve Jacob.
Aye.
Arlie Herbert.
Aye.
Patrick Byron.
Aye.
Kelly Stanage.
Aye.
And did we lose somebody?
Yeah.
Louis where's Louis Louis is on there? Louis.
I'm for.
Did you get Patrick?
No I got Louis Ryman what did you say?
Affirmative. Yeah affirmative affirmative.
And I vote a a. So what is the tally?
Unanimous approval.
Unanimous it passed okay now we have to come up with the original motion that's to accept.
To adopt the findings and recommended recommend approval with the conditions which would now include condition seventeen.
Okay now is there any discussion to that motion we also have a second but is there any other discussion for this? If there's no other discussion we will vote on the motion uh Arlie Herbert.
Yep.
Steve Jacob.
Yeah.
Lynn Carlson.
No.
Patrick Byron.
Nay.
My on computer uh Steve Jacob.
Already voted.
Yes.
You can't do it twice.
Mike Flynn.
Aye.
And.
I'm aye if you hear me.
Is that Louis?
Yeah am I can you hear me?
Yes.
Who did I s?
Uh Kelly.
Louis.
Kelly where'd you go?
No.
Hey and I will vote yes.
You get did you get Jordan he did right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You guys keep jumping all over on my screen here. And Stephanie says it's approved.
Uh six to three is the vote in favor of approving the motion so the motion carries.
Babe?
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Yeah what uh is there any other is there any other business that needs to come forth at this meeting tonight?
I guess you can do updates.
Oh yeah.
Do we have our Board of Adjustment Liaison that'd be Jordan?
Yes Jordan Jordan.
Yeah we had no meeting uh this month.
Babe? And Steve Jacob?
Yeah so uh county board approved the uh CUP to Matthew and Tessa Nelson to build on less than uh forty acres I guess maybe I'd ask for legal to give a kind of maybe background synopsis or K quality doesn't matter um on what what is inspiring with the Corps of Engineer and their movement of sand from Highway sixty-one they know the planning commission recommended approval ultimately the county board recommended denial and now I've heard understanding that they've been told they don't need anything from the county and they can go ahead and move sand can could you could you maybe elaborate a bit because we put a lot of time.
I I can there was a a recent memo written as well um there when it originally came before this body and the county board um they had entered into a real estate agreement um in order to deposit the sand at the quarry um that did not exempt them from our county ordinances um when the federal government owns or leases property they are exempt from following the county regulations uh a real estate agreement is not ownership or a lease. What ha happened since December is my understanding is they have now entered into a lease agreement with the quarry so the the federal government owns the property where the sand currently is we don't have any regulatory capacity over that and now they're leasing property at the quarry so we don't have the regulatory uh over um we don't have any control over that either so we we don't have the ability to prevent them from moving the sand or requiring them to go through our conditional use permit process to do so.
Don't they drive on county roads to do it?
Those aren't controlled by our zoning ordinance.
So Natalie where where are they and I'm sure a few people here don't know as well as me where is it going coming from going to?
Their property in Homer I believe it is uh is where the sand currently is located it and then it's going up to the Yedkey Quarry um where my understanding is that they have leased I haven't actually seen their lease agreement I've just been told that they have entered into a lease agreement for uh for use of the property there.
So that's the quarry is pretty much straight across the road from from where it is now they go up up that hill into that quarry?
Yep it's the the same scenario as uh the conditional use per or the interim use permit that came before the planning commission and the county board um the only difference is that the form of land rights that they now have mean that statute says they're not subject to our zoning ordinance.
Okay thank you.
So I guess I maybe just have to express frustration with the amount of time and effort put in by this board per diems staff time community really on a roller coaster thinking they had input on it and then county board doubles down on that holds more uh public input you know ultimately to for there to be a a different way to have worked this out it it feels like legal somewhere should have unearthed that and that's where the process should have started instead of putting the community and the taxpayer and the commissions and the county board it's been a few add up all the others of each person that spent time on this it's it's pretty monumental.
And I would note that this same exact same information was provided last fall and in December when I also wrote memos indicating that statute says if they own or lease the property they're not subject to our ordinance but they weren't at that time they didn't have those either of those options in play they changed that after that but that information has been out there.
Hey anyone else says any anything they want to discuss?
Uh yeah I just said.
Jordan?
Steve did you guys vote on the uh permit for Andy and Darian Frickson?
Aye yes yeah that was approved too.
Okay thanks.
Anything else Steve or anybody else have anything if not looking for them? Kelly?
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Yep Arlie.
Arlie seconds is a motion a second all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I don't think we need to do a roll call for this one. Okay we are adjourned thank you.
Thank you.
Good night all.
Thank you.
Night.